Sure, now they all leave.
It's a big show to, you know, come after all that. I'm not gonna dance or sing or anything for you guys. Good evening. I would like to request the approval of a $13,000 donation to Waltham Beach Technical College from an anonymous donor.
Who was it?
You're here!
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to approve the $13,000 donation to Waltham Beach Technical College from an anonymous donor.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Bryant, second, by whom? Okay, Mr. Dodd to approve the donation of $13,000 from an anonymous donor to Waltham Beach Technical College.
Yes. I think this is a great program, but I wanted to hear a little bit more about it because I know we as school board members are always out there talking about the programs that are offered in our schools. And I've been very impressed when I go to Waltham Beach Technical College, when I first learned about this program last year and then this year. You know, we're continuing, but we haven't had a lot of students. And it's a great program for technology. And I just thought it'd be a really neat thing, you could highlight what you're planning on. I don't know, you know, it's not about who the donor is. It's I just felt what we're gonna do with that money. So I'm excited and I wanted to hear about that.
Thank you very much. I am actually gonna let Ms. Newkirk share with you because I just happen to be lucky enough to be the director of Waltham Beach Technical College. They called and asked us if we wanted to accept this donation. Ms. Newkirk is the one who works day in and day out for this program and was the one that was recognized. She held some camps last summer and someone saw an article in the paper about her camps and was impressed and wanted to continue that effort. So I'm gonna let her explain to you how this came about.
Good afternoon. So as I stated, last summer I did one week of robotics camp and one week of STEM camp for girls as a result of Career Source Funding Act. And so there were articles in the paper, I contacted the paper and they ran two articles in the paper. And this person read the article and contacted their financial advisor, Edward Jones, and told them that they wanted to make the donation so that we could do more camps. So they actually wanted me to do more camps last summer, but that was like July. I'm like, can't do it next, you know, this summer went about next summer. So we were in communication from July until October, November. And then December came around, I didn't hear. And then January, I contacted Andrew Bries at Edward Jones and said, "Is your client still interested in donating to the program?" And he said, "Absolutely, I'm gonna come see you." So they came, I didn't meet an anonymous donor, but I don't know who he is. That's really, I don't know who he is.
It's Doug.
Yeah. So he came and Andrew had told me to ask for everything I needed. And so I met with the donor and I had a spreadsheet and finances and he didn't wanna look at that. He was asking about the program. I showed him around my lab and he said, "I'm willing to give you about $10,000." And I said, "Okay, well, I think I can do about three weeks of camp if I take out the shirts and don't do lunch." And he said, "Don't take out anything." He said, "Another $2,000 or $3,000 is nothing." So he said, "Get your numbers together, go over them again, round it to the nearest thousand, let Andrew know what you need and I'll get you a check." And so last week, last Wednesday or so, he brought the check to the school. And so with that money, we will do four weeks of four-day camps. We'll do two weeks of robotics, all four middle schools, rising middle schoolers. So we'll do two weeks of robotics camp, one week of STEM camp for girls and one week of manufacturing camp. So looking forward to that. We'll start June the 6th and go through July the 18th with those camps. So and on the bottom of the letter that he brought the check with, it said something like, "Thank you, Lori. Good luck with the camps this summer. Look forward to doing more with you with the kids in the future." So hopefully this is getting a...
That is great. How many students will be in the house at camp? How many do you have?
I'm gonna open it up for 20.
20, okay.
So hopefully I'll reach 80 students.
She also, she likes to teach on your lawn. So Courage Source actually is sponsoring another week of camp for her separate from this. And that's gonna be geared toward high school students. Because like you mentioned, Mr. Dodd, we are working really hard to try to recruit students for this program because Department of Labor statistics shows us this is a growing area, manufacturing for our five county region. So it's up and coming and it has a place in our community for the workforce. So we are hoping to continue to recruit and get students in that class so we can continue this program. So hopefully getting middle school and high school students in that will help lead it.
Yes.
So the Career Source Camp will be a manufacturing camp doing robotics, 3D design, computer guided drafting, computer numerical control. And we'll go into the colleges in Florida and Ocala. And you can spend four hours in their lab there, the Jantikology Lab.
That is great.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I propose Kerry's 4-0. You're in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I would now like to ask approval for a grant from the Citrus County Education Foundation for $2,656 for the First Annual All-County Course.
I will make a motion that we approve. Is that F? I'm sorry, I just wanted to...
F.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I make a motion we approve the grant from the Citrus County Education Foundation for $2,656 for the First Annual All-County Course.
Second?
Sorry, who's second? You both named each other. I need to have a choice of whom one?
Ladies first.
Okay, ladies first, okay. To move by Mr. Dodd, second, funding by Mrs. Bryant to approve a grant for the Citrus County Education Foundation for $2,656 for the First Annual All-County Course. Any comment?
Yes, and we heard Mr. Borriere talk a little bit about this earlier, but I again just wanted to know a little bit more about the specifics of this program. And I know we do, I believe it's All-County Band or All-County, All-County Band. And since it's the First Annual All-County Course, I want, I think it'd be good to highlight a little bit about how this is gonna go.
Well, I found out today that it's not really the First Annual. It's the first in 20 years. I had this discussion today with Dixie Lay, who is the course teacher at La Canto High School. And she was the one that is putting this together. And she informed me today that they have not had an all-course for 20 years. And how they came to know that is one of our new teachers in the district must have brought it up at a meeting or something and said, "Why don't we have it?" And they were the last one and it was 20 years ago. So I guess we're trying to revive this program to, you know, we already have an All-County Band. So now we're trying to do All-County Course. And so what they did is they, the course teachers and music teachers at the elementary level got together and met and discussed starting this back up or putting this back together. All of the elementary schools and all the middle schools were given the opportunity to participate. Two of the elementary schools chose, three elementary schools chose not to do it at this time and two of the middle schools. However, I found out today through some different numbers that they do have some from Crystal River Middle who have decided or are gonna come in and participate. Now, what they did was each school that is on the list that I provided you, they held tryouts at their school. And I believe the elementary, each elementary school could choose 10, which gives them 80 participants. And then there's various numbers for the middle school and for the high school. Roughly, you're looking at about 225 kids in the program. I know when you, if you read through this, it says March the 4th. Because they have the grants so late, the auditions have already taken place. But the performance is gonna be moved to Friday, April 22nd. And it still will be at the Curtis Peterson Auditorium. And the grant, basically the grant, what the grant's gonna cover is bus transportation for the elementary school to take them to the, they will practice on that Friday. The elementary students will meet at the Curtis Peterson Auditorium and they'll practice there that day. The secondary schools will go to First United Methodist Church and practice there. And then they will come together in the afternoon, or that evening for the practice of the better performance that night. So the grant covers transportation, it covers subs for the teachers and the music for the elementary and second middle and high school levels. So that's what this grant money covers.
Do you know, does this, does the event, will it coordinate at all with the band one or is it a separate?
I think it's a separate, separate.
Okay. This is great. Really, really great.
I love to see the arts. It's span while you're spending.
And they're hoping, and they're hoping that by, they're currently selling ads for their program that they're gonna have that night. And they're hoping that the money that they raise for some of these advertisements will be able to carry over next year and fund next year's, next year's All-County Course. So they can continue to start this tradition over again and continue it year after year after year. They're trying to build a course at all, from elementary all the way up.
Usually like in the band, I know they have like a guest conductor that comes in and the kids get to expand. This animal just said it's her. And it's really an exciting time because the kids get an opportunity to have somebody a little different, they get used to a little different person. Do you know if that's the way they're, and it's their first year.
Yeah, I think it's just Dixie and them are directing it or she's leading the course.
Well, that's great.
So they're learning this year, see what they need to do better or, you know, improve on next year. But at least they're getting the program backed up and going again and do recognize, you know, the kids and the students in Citrus County schools.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose Kerry's 4-0. Thank you.
And Ms. Lay wanted me to be sure to make sure to invite each and every one of you to the, to the performance that night. Thank you.
If she went and sent out an email to all of us just as a reminder, it'd be a big help.
She said she was, but she wanted me to make it a personal invitation.
Thank you.
Hey, I would like to approve a Ward of Bid 2016 27P Industrial Hygiene Consulting Services, piggyback of Orange County, B O C C, Y 15-105 Industrial Hygiene Consulting Services to G L E Associates Incorporated.
Move approval? Do I have to repeat it?
No. And who has a second?
Nobody, nothing.
Will someone give a second? Mr. Dodd, Mr. Bryant? Okay, motion by Mr. Bryant to approve bid 2016 27P Industrial Hygiene Consulting. Any questions? I know I have one, I don't know where he is. Go ahead, Mr. Dodd.
I wanted to just get an update on our asbestos lead on issues in our schools. And I know this is a piggyback contract off of Orange County. And I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the $65,600 that we're in budget and have spent for this type of services.
Okay, so I want to make sure you understand the question. You wanna know what do we get for our $65,000 in this bid? Is that what I understand you saying?
I wanna know what we get for it and I wanna know what position the schools are in. We are facing, many of our schools that are older. And I just wanna know as a board member, what the risks are that we're aware of in regards to asbestos lead and radon.
I've asked Mr. Wagner, who's with our co-compliance, to come up and address that with you guys. See how smart they are?
Yeah, the $65,000 isn't all for that. There's more pieces in that. It's just that cost strip. There's a abatement company which comes in and actually takes the tile out. G L E is the monitoring company. They have to be separate because, you know, they can't have the contractor doing his own inspections.
Is this part of our continuing identifying of schools and the assessments that have done of mitigation of various removal of, whether that's, you know, we've had contaminated sections within that have been identified and then we have, we do an annual contract on removal. I know asbestos has been one. We've had cleanups, you know, that have been environmentally sensitive. That's what I was thinking the word. That it's really part of an entire ongoing...
Absolutely. Anytime we do any type of reconstruction or what have you?
Anytime we do any type of reconstruction or what have you, G L E can come in and they will survey the area to make sure that there's no asbestos in there. Oftentimes, many years ago when schools were built, in the adhesive they use to put down the floor tiles, that's where we find asbestos. If they do find that asbestos, part of that $65,000 also includes the abatement, the removal of that. And you can't have the consulting firm who's making the determination whether or not the asbestos is present there also be the entity who's responsible for the removal. So that's what I think is what... And in some cases, it's been identified, but we're not touching it. And it's perfect, we wanna leave it alone.
Everything's identified.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. So it's already been identified and we know whether we're gonna have to remove it.
Every six months, we're required to have a survey done and that's what G L E does. They come in, look at all the asbestos we have. We have maps, books, tells us it in good shape, it is not in good shape. And then every three years, there's a re-inspection where they go in and actually look everywhere to make sure they didn't miss anything before. So we know everything, we know where everything is.
This isn't the re-inspection then? This isn't...
Part of it is. There's a six-month survey, well, that would be two a year, and a re-inspection. It comes out to about 20 grand altogether. So basically, G L E is 20 grand and if we have any abatement activity or anything else, they do the indoor air quality. If we have any concerns with that, if we have any concern with radon, if we have any concerns with lead, they do all that. Pretty much, it's about 20, 25,000 a year.
What are the concerns with lead that could show up? What is that?
It's not a concern for us, but you have to know where it is. And again, like he was saying, if you go in and do any renovations or anything, you have to know where that is. Because you can't just go in and start grinding on it.
Move paint?
It's mostly the handrails. And by now, it's got five or six other coats of paint on top of it. So, and there's not a lot. It's all lines, you know, the yellow lines, like at WTC, some of the yellow lines down in auto shop. It's stuff like that.
Was like a lead-based paint?
Yes, that's what it is. Yep, and we have surveys for all that.
The air quality, do they, do they take air quality measurements in all the schools?
If we ask them to. Only if we have a concern or somebody has a concern and we can't figure it out, then we'll call them in.
So if there's a leak and there might be mold or mildew, that would be a time you would follow up with an air quality check maybe or...
I would go out first. Because if you have a leak or something that they changed the tile, if it's not above 70% humidity and wet, mold can grow. And all black mold isn't toxic, but all, you know, all toxic mold isn't black. So there's a lot of assumptions people make. But the first thing I go out is check temperature and humidity. Then I'll have John's guys go out if they have to change the filters, clean the coils. You know, we'll try to do that ourselves. We get to a point where we can't, then we'll call them in.
And we keep our HVAC, the HVAC systems set to where the humidity stays well below 60%.
So with the reference to the fire that occurred at Enveris Middle School, was there ever any air quality surveys done there or what was...
Not that I know of. But, I mean, it was already done inside, so there shouldn't have been any problems. But Eric might add, so I'm done. I don't know. Because that was a contractor thing.
So G L E is not the contractor, they're the consulting firm?
G L E is our environmental consultants. We have another group, Simpson, who are the actual abatement. So G L E watches Simpson when they do their stuff.
So I take it this summer is, the summer's the time when we take care of asbestos removal?
Yes, unless a project comes up during spring break and they can do it during mid, but right now you got IPS. There's two rooms that have asbestos floor tile. I'll go in first with my group, go get rid of it and Eric will go in and the contractor can do his thing.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Kerry's 4-0, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now onto a little financial update. It's your favorite part, right? The first sheet I've given you is the cash and investment portfolio. So you can see where our money is and the interest rates that we are earning at this time. This time of year, we're very healthy in our cash flow. We just received big payments over taxes in December and January. So now the building has happened and now we'll keep spending and using that cash to make it through the rest of the year. Any questions on the cash and investment portfolio sheet?
So the highest interest we're getting now is the certificate of deposit at 1.05%.
We have, if you look down below in the Florida Fixed Income Tracks, we have 1.10 in one to three-year investments. Of course, the longer we can put the money out there, the longer, the higher the percentage. So we have a little bit out there right now, you know, until we build up our cash.
I have any thoughts on interest being higher in the near future, meaning like the next three, four years?
From what our investment advisor has said, yes, they should be going up in the next, the next year, they should be going up according to the investment advisor.
So we're gonna keep our investments as short-term, not long-term, expecting to open up?
As of right now, we don't wanna tie up too much money because we don't wanna have to go out for a tan, you know, we don't wanna have to go out and borrow money to meet our cash flow because we have stuff tied up in long-term assets. So, you know, for right now, until we've gotten a little healthier and a little healthier, we'll keep putting a little bit more away in the longer-term investments. The next sheet that I've given you is the forecast sheet. And I do run these numbers as close to, I ran these Monday. So these are pretty much as close to as the end of February as I can get. Looking at the expenses we've had, the money we are saving with open positions, we're saving more every month with fuel, of course. At this time, I am projecting that we should end, we are going to have to dip into our fund balance a little bit under $100,000 this year. So with the reserves that we have, we should still end up at about 4.07%, which our board policy is 3.5%.
Now, just, so this is the first I've seen this report. So tell me again now, why, why are we gonna be dipping into our fund balance? That has nothing to do with the insurance issue that we're facing, or does it?
Yes.
It has to do with that?
Yes.
So after that has been, after that's been dealt with, we're gonna dip in?
This has been dealt with in this projection here.
Okay, so it has, so it is showing that?
Right.
Okay, very good.
That was our undesignated reserves that we had, that we were addressing that on...
Yes.
So we, that's why we still had it on our, we still had it initially in our, in our balance on that.
Yes, sir.
So we just moved it over?
Yes, and we've actually expensed it out now, so it hits the fund a little bit different. So our reserves are lower than they were last month, but our expenses are a little higher than we projected last month due to the self-insurance.
But I think you planned on a 1.6.
Right.
This is less than that, but we still have 2016 that we're going through, that we're gonna, that we're just watching to see where we're going.
Yes.
I mean, at this point, some of it we have to watch.
We still have $800,000 reserved for that. If you look at the, in the far right column, the projection column, that's where we, I project we'll end at the end of the year, we have that 800,000. We still have that reserved.
And that includes then the undesignated of the four. So we're still, we're still at a little over four with that already counted.
We're over 4 million with 800,000?
No, 4.07%.
I'm sorry.
He's looking at the percent.
Okay, four, okay.
Yes.
But I think, yeah.
So we're still looking at ending a little bit, our percentage a little bit higher than we did last year. So we are, even with this, we're still looking to end better.
$800,000 is what we're looking at, that's our designated fund. If she was to have to take that out, that 3.729, which represents a 4.07, that doesn't affect that. It won't affect the number.
Okay, I got you. Because we're, yeah, thank you.
My question too, and it may be something for Sheri to respond to, is just that, just some of the things we're doing, because, you know, one of the things we talked about is right now, we can always only make decisions when it comes to making our premiums based on what our past projections are, what our data is. And so we try to make the best, I don't wanna say a guesstimate, because it's really not. There's a lot of science that goes into trying to make the best determination. But then after it happens, we then have to work with whatever numbers come in for claims and, and higher costs. We kinda had the perfect storm that happened this, this year. We kinda talked about it, I know, before. It happens. I'm still very pleased that we have the Wellness Center. I'm very pleased that, you know, that we are self-insured and that I think we're, we can ride out the challenges we have. We've had the Affordable Healthcare, which is not necessarily always been affordable for us as far as, but what are the things that we're gonna continue to do to try and mitigate as we move forward? Because premiums, increased premiums in healthcare unfortunately is just a part of what we're gonna have to continue to be adjusting. But in, we're always trying to operate as inexpensively as possible.
Right, and you're correct. An increase in premiums, we'll have to probably make some adjustments to our plans. But in addition to that, we are still enhancing the Health Insurance Committee. We have a representative from every school and from each site now that does come to that meeting and takes information back to the school sites. And then also is in contact with myself and Mr. Ballmer, sharing things that they're hearing at those sites as well, so that we can work on those, to improve those. We're giving the quarterly updates to the employees that are on our health insurance. We're also going to be implementing April 1st, a mail order prescription plan, which is going to help with the expenses of the prescriptions as well as opening up, freeing up slots at the Wellness Center. We will, that way we can increase slots for people to be seen without having to increase doctor hours, which would cost us more money. So there's just a few of the things that we're doing to help mitigate that. And we'll continue to look at things we can do to, to continue to mitigate.
And your connection with Crown, I know pretty regularly in, you know, making whatever modifications that can be to, to keep those costs.
We have our monthly meetings, but in addition to that, you're correct, that has increased and we are speaking with them on the phone on a regular basis. And they know the urgency and they're, they're working with us to help come up with strategies to help mitigate.
I know I asked you this earlier, but I just wanna make sure the board kinda hears it and understands. I was saying that, as I expressed, we, we try to make the best determination of our, what do we think our premium costs are going to be? We have to build into that the reserves for the coming year. I think last year, health insurance, we budgeted a moderate 7% roughly is what it increased from the previous year. Even if we had budgeted, if we knew, if we had the crystal ball that told us, we knew exactly what our premiums would be at the end of 2015, it would be higher. But if you look at districts like, for example, I'm thinking of Levy County, I think they were almost 25% increase in their health premiums. Even if we made that adjustment, we would be far under that. And so I know we, none of us are ever happy when we can't hit the mark. These aren't things we can, are really within our arm of control. But I just wanna say, I appreciate it that your office is continuing to do that. I appreciate you meeting with us to give us information that we need, so it's not a surprise to us. And I think that we do have to keep articulating that message out to the schools, so that site leaders I think are a real help in helping them take some ownership into the cost of these premiums because, you know, we are self-insured. So it is, you know, getting to the Wellness Center helps keep premiums costs low, taking care of oneself, making sure that we do our blood work. That includes me, along with everyone else, helps.
Absolutely. Also like to share with you that talking with our representative from Crown, if we were not to stay self-insured, I work premiums, just looking at it with a cursory view... were not to stay self-insured, our premiums, just looking at it with a cursory view, you're looking at premium increases of, up over 40%. That's four zero percent. So we're going to do everything we possibly can to mitigate the rising numbers we're seeing in our self-insurance fund, and we're going to exhaust all those for, have any kind of talks about going away from that.
I think we need to share that with, with our staff, because this is something that is a benefit to staff, and, and we are choosing this, and again, I was here, I wasn't here when you guys started this process, and I'm very pleased that I get to kind of benefit as a board member, because this was, these were tough times that you went through to make this decision, but I really think when you look at over the last, I know six years I've been here, it's been pretty, pretty comfortable looking at what our increases have been and how we're going to adjust them. So we have unfortunate things, we don't have a crystal ball with, with everything, but...
The other piece that we're really focusing on is an education piece for our membership, to help our folks understand the difference between being fully insured and self-insured. That was part of the reason why we expanded the insurance committee, is to train our insurance committee members for them to go back to their individual sites, and we did prepare a PowerPoint for them to share with the staff. Mr. Ballmer is also assisting us with the management of the health insurance now, and he will be going later in the spring, he'll be going out to the schools himself and accompanying each site's representative as they too speak with their, with their staffs. Also, we've recently sent out a survey, Survey Monkey, trying to get some feedback from our membership as to what are some of the things that are, that's taking place when they go to the Wellness Center, what are some things we can do better, what are things we're doing well, because we know that the success of the Wellness Center is driven by the experiences that our staff and members have when they go to the Wellness Center. Get some feedback there. We have a meeting on March the 28th, I believe it is, to review that data with the insurance committee and to formulate more strategies as we move forward.
You know, the other thing that we had talked about a little bit with Blue Cross and Bushell, oh, that's a great company, you know, when that contract comes due another year, I think, right?
2017.
You know, that's the time we're going to have to look at that and bid it, or look at other options that could save us money, and I think what we have to remember is that that has nothing to do with Wellness Center. I mean, the Wellness Center can be a part of any insurance company's plan to provide us with our employees with, with healthcare. So, you know, that would be something I would encourage, and I know we've talked about it, I think that's going to be something to look at, but that's something we have to be aware of as a board, because these costs are going to continue to drive a lot of financial decisions that we're going to have to make with regards to, you know, self-insurance with, with, you know, fund reserves, all those things are going to be something that we have to be on top of.
And we don't disagree, and I'll just give you another scenario. I know a friend of mine works for a company, you know, with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and they just experienced about a 35% increase. So I think a lot of people are going to be looking towards the end about bidding different programs and groups out there, but what we also have taken consideration, who takes that insurance?
That's right.
Because when we first got into this, we looked at a couple of the groups, and our hospital included, some of them weren't taking certain insurance companies, and sometimes we have to take the good end of that, but we don't disagree.
And that was exactly going to be my concern. I totally agree, we need to bid it out, we need to, but it's, I don't want us going to Gainesville, Newport Ritchie to, for, you know, to get to a hospital, because none of the hospitals provide it. But I am completely on board, we need to do that.
And that providers, local providers, sure.
I asked you about the, any changes in the federal insurance, you know, the Obamacare and all, if that changes, will it affect us? Because it costs us more because of that being instigated, it's taken away, will it cost us less?
It depends on what they replace it with, you know, if that was to go away, certainly there would be cost savings to the district, because the Affordable Care Act does cost us some money. So if they were to abolish that or go away with it, absolutely we'd save those dollars, but it's hard for us to, you know, hypothesize as to what that may be if they were to replace it with another.
Medication could be a positive thing, if they did deregulate that, where we could use out-of-country pharmaceuticals.
Now I got what you're saying.
Well, I'm sorry, that, that I could see could be a very positive, because that's certainly an area where we make, we pay a lot.
Maybe our budget?
No, no, I mean, even like Canada, for example, that, that's one of the areas where there's a cost effective, and that could have a positive impact to us.
Does the federal changes could impact us positively?
Absolutely, absolutely. And as we step away, we will scrutinize the dead works that the individual companies do provide for us, whether it's United, Blue Cross, we'll have, yeah, we will scrutinize that network.
Have we had the experience of, say, individual companies withdrawing from a market? Let's, I know that Blue Cross and Bushell's not going to withdraw from us, but let's say suddenly they decided to improve the Citrus County market or something, have we had that experience in the past?
No, ma'am, not to my knowledge. I still have some questions for Ms. Wilson, not in regards to insurance, so I don't want to, are we done with insurance?
Yeah, we'll do it, I think.
Okay, so let's get back to this projection you gave us. Now, I just want to make sure, because, you know, you're saying that as a percentage of revenue, our undesignated fund balance is higher as a percentage, but in reality, if we look at the bottom of the figure, it's our undesignated fund balance is going from 4.2 million in fiscal year 15 to 3.7 million, that's what you're projecting, right? So the undesignated fund balance is actually going down, we're going to have less in...
You have to add, the assigned amounts do not come out of when they calculate the percentage, when the auditors calculate the percentage, the assigned amounts get added back into the undesignated fund balance.
So the $800,000 and the $106,000 are going to be added back in?
Correct, and then you also have to look at that our revenues are higher, because it's a percentage of our revenues.
Well, I understand that, that's what I was saying, but I'm looking at, if we look at the pot of the dollar amount, because I know when I came on the board, the goal that we had talked about was to be above $5 million, that's what I remember us talking about.
Yes.
And so if we add in roughly another $900,000 then, is that what you're saying, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so that gets added back in to calculate that, that 4.07%.
That puts us about 4.6, so in, in reality, we're, we're above?
We're above last year, which would, if you add the $147,000 in, would be about 4.4, so we're a little bit higher.
Okay.
And it's only calculated on the general fund revenues, the transfer does not go into the calculation. Okay. The last thing that I gave you was the amended financial statements that I had in our meetings told you, I would give you the new figures for the general fund and the self-insurance fund. I do want to note, I also added the memorandum page, we had, I had some words mixed up. In the bottom paragraph, the general fund, about halfway through, it should have said current year revenues are exceeding expenditures by $19 million, not expenditures, we're receiving, exceeding revenues, I apologize for that misstatement. So that's why that sheet's in there for you to just correct the wording on that. And then the general fund and the self-insurance fund are the ones that were affected by the transfer. So I wanted you to have those new figures compared to what you have in your packet.
Is the exceeding in part due to the insurance?
The revenues are exceeding the expenditures due to the, right now is when we get our bulk of our tax.
Oh, our revenue, I'm sorry.
Yes, I had it backwards on the original.
Yeah, and I still, even when you said it, I heard it again backwards, so I apologize. Got it.
So in regards to the capital project funds?
Yes, sir.
That you have, that you gave us in the original package, so we're seeing those decreasing.
Yes, sir.
And do we have any projection on next year? How, you know, we're still above 20 million, but at one time we were above 60 million. Of course, you had mentioned to me that was when we had, we had the bond.
The influx of the bond money, which had to be spent in X amount of time on the renovation and construction and crystal.
Yeah, we have some renovation projects that we'd like to look at, that we are, that Mrs. Hemmels and her staff are looking at, and we realize, like we've talked as a board, there's going to be, you know, renovation cost ahead for, for us.
Yes.
So what is the projection, or do we have anything on that fund balance projection for next year?
We're just now starting budgeting process, so we, I mean, we don't have, the legislature has to finish their sessions, we need to get the property appraiser values, I mean, we're looking at things kind of staying pretty steady right now. You know, we're not seeing any major influx of additional funds at this time.
But I don't think, I think everything that we have immediately planned for is within our budgets and our five-year plan.
Yes.
And I don't disagree with, I think, with your, where your, where your underlying thing is going, and we're thinking of Floral City and Inverness and all of that, and I'm on board, so I'm there in spade. We just, it's identifying how we're going to get some of that money, and, and I'm the first to also say, I think we need to continue to identify projects that have impact fee fundable. Even if we may or may not be able to do them, we need to keep them on the books, start.
No, you're fine. I was going to say, before Mr. Bishop speaks, Mr. Bishop's group will start bringing back and quarterly report on our capital fund, so that you can see if projects are moved and those types of things, and you'll see, you know, with the long-range plan.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the Floral City project. We have hired an architect, he's in the process of designing the master plan. Our goal is to bring to the board the master plan, three proposals, in the April War Meeting. That's our goal, so we'll be seeing that next month.
I think that's where Tude will hopefully be able to start getting into some of that need of those things.
And then the last question I had was on those Doris Schlossberg Driver's Education Safety Act funds, and I know we talked a little bit, you said that you have received the money.
We received it, actually last week.
Okay, and that's going to, that's not on these, this report, though?
It's not identified out specifically, because it's something we budget for, we request the money, they send us the money, so it's, there's not a line item for just the Doris Schlossberger on the financial statements you're given every month.
But we have the money for this summer's driver's ed program.
We have the money.
We have the money.
When the money came in, that's for this fiscal year.
This fiscal year, so this summer?
Yes.
Our driver's ed, but yet, you know, when we were at FSB and Mr. Schlossberg came in, was concerned that this wouldn't, would not be funded, I haven't heard, I was online...
I was just going to ask you if you had.
Yeah, I went online, I've looked and looked, and I know Bruce Sheffield was checking on it to see, but you haven't heard any, any regards to that being cut or anything, have you?
Just the rumblings that it may be cut, but I haven't, there isn't been any definite answers right now.
And some of that's playing out, I think, in the next day or so. My would hope was that they were going to allow the increase.
Right, he wanted a $2...
So that would have, I mean, that would have been something we could have certainly used.
Right.
The funds will, I mean, we don't know what the funds will cover depending on how much we're going to offer over the summer, driver's ed.
Right, but those funds come in on a civil penalty on a traffic citation, right? I mean, that's, that's added to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wonder if there's any way that we could check here with the clerk's officer, I mean, I mean, they're collecting those funds, obviously, and we apply for them.
Right, I have to send a request, a letter to them requesting the Doris Schlossberger funds for the school system.
And it's given to us in its entirety, it's, none is held back, I mean, they give us what they've collected for that year.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Can we send a report over?
No, I could ask for a reporter.
Yeah, I think there's problems.
We might see.
No problem.
I think, you know, it would help us to know what's...
Because that does fund our, Mr. Mullin, you said what, three weeks, I think it was? No, four weeks? How many weeks of driver's ed, do you remember? I know...
Driver's ed did pretty much last all summer, actually, during the bathroom for nine days, and then they tried two more days.
And the number of drivers will dictate how long we have to go, because they have to log so many hours. Okay. I mean, that's a great program, we have no intention of dropping it. Right. You know, and we won't know until we see how many kids sign up, how many instructors will be, our, our goal was to try to provide it for everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We're going to go down to number A4 under seven, and move that up right above Suzy Swain's presentation on human resources. So I think food service is not going to be presented, is that correct?
That's been pulled, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So therefore, we're ready, yeah, to do four. I think Mr. Doug, Mr. Fowler, you?
No, ma'am, I have nothing to say.
He's going to answer questions, okay.
I'm sorry.
And his, Mr. Mullin? Yeah, A4 is going to be moved up to, right now. A4 under seven.
Hi.
Hi.
I was, I was just, I was just trying to take the band to perform at Dollywood, we were, we were invited to play up there, and there are some side excursions I would like them to do, and I guess there was some questions on, but I think it says, it says just whitewater rafting, and we're doing other things beside that, but my big thing, my big thing is I would like for the students not to just go all the way to Dollywood in that area, as they, like, well, we were sort of there, and I wanted them to experience the area, so that was...
Well, let me ask a question, because I had gone there and I had done whitewater rafting there. Yes, it's still on. I was stuck on a sandbar at one point.
That's her still went, she's sticking to it.
I was, but I had a question on that. Will the students be instructed with the whitewater rafting? Because it's not huge whitewater rafting, I mean, it's just minor, but will they be instructed on safety and all this sort of stuff, and they're all wearing life jackets?
Yes, yeah, we, we would be going down the Nantahala Rapids, which the highest one is a class three.
I've been on that.
Yeah.
I have too, yeah.
Oh, hey, all of us have been whitewater rafting there.
I haven't been there in so long, no.
I had to go on the cheap one.
Whitewater rafting at Towns Ray Near, and, yeah, but I didn't go to this one.
You have to go and do Deep Creek and go to...
Exactly.
Although I did see the video, looks like you had a good time.
So I think that was really one of the concerns, to be sure the students were instructed. I didn't know they had experienced it, I knew I had, and I remember going down, everyone was going to the raft, and they're going, I was telling them, why are we going there, crowded up, I'm going to go to the left, wrong choice. Listen to what they're telling me, so hopefully the students listen.
Well, we're going in, we're only going in the large rafts, so there's going to be, with the guide, each, each raft has a professional guide, and, and the students really don't have a choice. So there, so there's six, you know, students or chaperones in a raft with a, with a professional guide, and they do have, before they go, they have, I think it's like a, it's like a 20-minute course that you go on, you have to do this, you have to do this, if this happens, they all have to wear their life raft, or life rafts, that'd be interesting. They all have to wear their life vest and helmet.
Excellent, so they won't be a renegade like I was, some consequences, okay.
No, they're not allowed to do that.
I just, I have, I was a band student that traveled too, I'm not the stately person that you see before you. And so I do love travel, and I love the opportunities, they're great opportunities. I think maybe, and we teased about it a little bit, but our concern, we often get instructed at our trainings that any out-of-state travel is always a little challenging, concerning, because if something happens out of state, it creates a little bit more challenges, so that's why a lot of times we have these out-of-state, they come before us, and some of them are very routine, some of them are not. This one, you get whitewater rafting, the images of death and demise come to mind, so then you add a high-risk activity, that becomes, I think, the, the little bit concerning. So that's one of the first things. The other thing, and I'm, I can live with it, but I, I hate the idea of taking away the instructional times if we can avoid it, so I know there's nothing maybe you can do now, but, because I'm thinking, as I looked at it, it's Thursday, Friday, I probably, if quit a kid, wouldn't make it to Monday's class the, the following after, so it just may be something that we just are more cognizant of in the future, that if we can just, of how we look at instructional days. So, but my, probably my bigger concern is just is, is there, are we talking about, is there going to be insurance coverage for that? Is there something we're needing to do differently? I just want to make sure that we've covered our bases.
I have been in contact with FSBIT, and it will be covered, and we're also requiring that the band pay for a special event coverage, which is an additional coverage in addition to our general liability, so it would be covered. There's a waiver that Mr. Bradshaw has drafted for various types of activities, that waiver will be required, parents will have to sign the paperwork that is required by... Parents will have to sign the paperwork that is required by the rafting company as well, prior to departure.
Mr. Connor, did you want to add anything to?
No ma'am, I'm good.
Very good. Keep track of it.
That's what I say. There off I am.
Okay.
And I would like to say, the good thing is, is that we did take the same trip in 2010 when we took the band and whitewater rafting.
It's cliff diving at that time.
I've got a question though, because I just wanna make sure we don't hold you to something that you said on the helmets. Because I'm not, I didn't realize the Nantahala, I, every time I've been on it, people don't wear helmets. So you just told us they're gonna be wearing helmets. Is that may or may not be, or are you sure?
No, that's, that's what I've been told and that's the way the last time we had to wear helmets.
You do wear helmets. Okay. Well, that's.
And it, and it may be, it may be certain, there's different companies that are out there. We're using the Nantahala Outdoor Center. I don't know if other companies, you know, if it's an option or not. Is it ours? Ours we have to.
Is there anything we need to do to break this motion up, or is there anything you need illegal for us to do?
Well, not really. I mean, you can vote on one part of it, all of the part of it. So if you didn't want to go whitewater rafting.
We could break it out that way.
We could break it out that way. So you could do, you know, kind of whatever you wanted to do.
I'm, I'm happy to make the motion again. I, we, I think my, our concerns have been addressed with regards to mitigation of insurance. FSBIT, I have to say, you know, go Ms. Bryant. If you don't know, Ms. Bryant sits with FSBIT. So she, she.
They take care of us.
I appreciate that. So they did take care of that, that side of it. And again, I mentioned my other concerns. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the out-of-state trip to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, for the La Canto High School band to perform at Dollywood. And to go whitewater rafting April 7th through the 10th, 2016. The cost is $325 per student and the funds to be raised through fundraising and through Walconers. That's my motion.
Okay. Can I have you extend that and also to, that they have to execute any and all necessary documents as the district?
And I would imagine that it would have to institute all necessary documents as required by the attorney.
Second.
Move by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the out-of-state trip to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, for La Canto High School band to perform at Dollywood. And to go whitewater rafting April 7th through 10th, 2016. The cost is $325 per student. And the funds are raised through fundraisers and all the necessary paperwork signed. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Connor, you can write a $500 check out to them. That'll work.
In the mail.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Now we're in human crystals.
Good evening. I am here to request approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Did we have a chance to look at the Goldenrod or did we do something else?
Did we have to say goodbye to Carl Pomposelli and Ms. Karen from Rock Crusher? They are, it looks like they're going to be leaving us. Karen at the end of the school year. But Mr. Carl, it looks like we're, it's bye-bye in just another week or so, or a couple of weeks. I'm sure they've got a cruise. By the way, I see flag football. La Canto will have somebody, the Go Flag Football Girls, they were on the paper, in the paper today. So I think it was, it was Citrus High and Crystal River. Those girls are tough. They, they play football without pads or anything.
Do you have a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the instructional and support staff recommendations as presented on the Goldenrod. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Goldenrod. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Here is four zero. Thank you.
I ask that you approve Lynn Kirby as the new Director of Exceptional Student Education, beginning June 1st, 2016.
It is my pleasure to approve Lynn Kirby, Director of Exceptional Student Education, effective June 1st, 2016. What are you saying, Ms. Emily?
I enthusiastically second that.
And I just wanted to ask off you. She said to apologize to you while she was working, been here tonight, but she has a function in her school.
We always know her priorities are in the right place.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Lynn Kirby, Director of Exceptional Education, effective July? June. Excuse me, June 1st, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Here is four zero. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Information Services.
Good evening. I'm here to request approval of Vertex Consulting Purchase Agreement Contract.
I'd like to move approval for the Vertex Consulting Incorporated Equipment and Services Purchase Agreement.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the purchase of Vertex Consulting Incorporated Equipment and Services. Any questions?
Yes, I have some questions about it. So I know when we talked on the phone yesterday, I had some questions about it. We didn't have the contract. That was sent to us today. So I just need to have an overview of what exactly we're doing. You can give me your summary, but when we're talking about spending $767,000, I have a little bit of a problem with, you know, reviewing that kind of a contract in one day. And I know that you had assured me of some things that I'd like you to mention to the board and talk about. One of the, you know, we talked about several things. I'll give you the floor and you can talk about it and then I may ask some questions as well.
Okay. Well, basically what we're doing is our current phone system agreement ends July 15th. So we've been looking at the last year, different systems available. ShoreTel seems to have the premier phone system and Vertex Consulting is the vendor that has been very successful in implementing that system locally. Some of the things we're doing is we're adding phones. So every classroom will have a phone. Every teacher will have access to a phone in their classroom. And we're also adding an emergency notification system that will enable schools to set up different types of scenarios, like the code red, code yellow, whatever. And it will have a predefined set of people that will be contacted with information on what to do in that situation. Can be used both at the school level and at the district level. As far as your questions regarding 9/11, I did talk to Dennis DeVoe at the County 9/11 Ministry after our conversation. And he's very comfortable with the system. Obviously, we have to work closely with him, Vertex and CenturyLink, to ensure that we have all the information correctly set up in the system. The way the ShoreTel system works though, is it provides information down to the extension level, to the 9/11 system. So it will provide the building and room to the system through the ShoreTel product itself. If that product was completely down for some reason, communication would occur through other business lines that we have connected to the system. And that's where CenturyLink comes into play and they provide the location information and that.
Okay. So if a teacher, because we're gonna put phones in all the classrooms, and I know there are some schools that already have phones in the classrooms, but not all of them do. So this would be all, classrooms would have a phone. And if they were to need to dial 911, do they dial an eight or a nine first? Do you know that, or is it?
That I have to get with CenturyLink to determine the specifics of that.
Okay. So they dial 911 and on the positron or on the, the address, it'll come up the, the building and the classroom number, you said? Or, because I know when we talked.
Through the ShoreTel system, yes.
Through ShoreTel, it's gonna show.
The information for that extension, which includes the physical address, the building number and.
And the classroom number. Okay. Now, I thought the CenturyLink, this was an issue with CenturyLink though too, that we were, this is a move away from CenturyLink.
But yeah, it's still. For the actual phone system, we were still utilizing CenturyLink's circuits for the home system.
But I think Mr. Dodd, I think Mr. Dodd, are you saying, because that's what my understanding too, by the way, that even with 911, if you pick up an extension now, it may not necessarily know it's that extension or the 911 office.
Right.
Unless there's continual coordination that we just move that line and it's located and it's mapped to. So that, whether that's a PB, a VoIP system, or it's a traditional PBX system, that's still, I think, is the same scenario of, of we have to provide that information to the 911 office. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Through, through the ShoreTel system though, we will have that embedded in, in our system that we can control and manage ourselves along with Vertex Consulting.
This puts everything on where you have the coordination to be able to do it. Right now, we have different systems at different sites, which makes that even a little more complicated.
Right now, the primary switch that's running our phone system and everything else, we're not allowed to do any changes in that system. We have to have CenturyLink come out and make any changes in that system.
And you're just talking about emergency, like we're in a regular phone call from an extension. It wouldn't show the extension. You'd still have to call subject 61931, main number, and then ask for the extension. It would not show the extension that called you. You're just talking about 911, don't you?
No, I think you, would, actually, it's, it encompasses the same thing. And we're just saying that 911 is one of the acts, but yeah, it actually does caller ID from every, from every location to every location.
You would know when someone called you, like we get called all the time. Who called you?
Yes. The system should allow that, correct?
That would be wonderful. It wastes a lot of time otherwise.
Does this system also give voicemail to, for teachers?
Yes. It's a district-wide voicemail system and you have a feature built in where if, say, a district staff person travels from school to school, they can actually log into a phone at the school they're at as themselves and receive their voicemail at that school site. And there's also the option of having the voicemail forwarded to your email account.
So the $315,000 purchase price that's in this contract now is gonna be purchase of phones for all the schools? Is that new phones, or are there some phone systems that are already in place that will not be replaced?
No, for the, for the agreement that we're considering, it's replacing all of our equipment, all of our phone switches, all of our phones. We're gonna be purchasing two new servers from Dell to manage the voicemail and information in the system.
And we are literally changing our method to voice over internet protocol is the way we're going.
That's correct.
And you're convinced that this is the time and the right decision to do that?
Definitely. With the premise-based system. We did look at hosted systems. Hosted systems cost more money and they also are very dependent on internet access. So we decided the premise-based system is the best solution. It provides the best reliability for each of our sites. And the voice over IP gives us some new features that enhance that system.
And now, the, the Dell products that you're talking about buying are the servers.
There's two servers, right.
Two, it's gonna take two servers.
A primary and a backup.
And, and that is included in this cost also?
That's a separate cost. We're gonna be buying that directly from Dell. That's $8,200 for those two servers. And that's just to have a primary server and a backup server for disaster recovery in case the primary server goes down.
Oh, and I guess I may have, I may have misread this. We're paying 315 on the purchase price and then another 315 on the delivery and $136,000 on the installation.
Right. The total price is the 767?
And about seven, about $630,000 is gonna, is gonna go to equipment, is that right, Mr. Bradshaw? I think you wrote this contract, right?
Yes. The majority of this equipment, part of it is five years of support through Vertex. So it includes all the equipment, all the new phones, all the installation, training, and five years of their platinum support.
Okay. Now, I didn't see in the bids, so.
No, this is off the National WISCA contract. Actually, the WISCA contract has a 35% discount bill and they're giving us a much higher discount bill than that.
Okay. So we are within our policies to not bid this?
It's on the, it's on the approved vendor lists. And that's why.
We were, yeah.
It's typically hard for someone to beat those approved vendor lists is typically why.
How much are we paying right now for the current phone system? Do you know on it?
This, this contract is gonna save us over $100,000 per year versus what we currently pay. So we're not only increasing by over 400 phones for our teachers, but we're gonna save over $600,000 over a five-year period.
And the $5,700 that you put in the summary that's we're gonna save was maintenance costs?
No, that originally, at the time I wrote the summary, we were looking at doing a lease instead of a purchase. So under the lease agreement, we were gonna save that much. But now, since we're purchasing, so at least we're gonna save even more because we're not having to pay any finance charges.
Right.
So over the five-year period, it's over $600,000 costing versus our premise system.
Are there teachers without phones? Thank you.
And, and I, I wanna say, I've always appreciated, and this is what's always great with being part of a board, because each board member brings a different question and a different concern or excitement. In this case, I'm gonna say, I'm, and I appreciate Mr. Dodd continuing to ask these questions. I gotta just say, I'm thrilled this day's coming. I've been very, very much a proponent of VoIP. It, we weren't quite, the technology wasn't quite there, you know, five, six years ago. Even though I was hoping it was, you know, gonna be there, it wasn't quite there. We also had systems that weren't really old enough that we needed to switch them over yet. It's the right time. I, I think that what I am pleased with is we have schools, not even just old schools, Crystal River High School. It was no, no ill intention, but we have a number of classrooms that do not have phones. And this will enable us to have phones in there. There is an expectation that we not only have teachers call parents and communicate in that way, but we do wanna have access that right now, God forbid, we have a tragedy take place. There is that communication. VoIP now is very different than it was a number of years ago with the very concerns, Mr. Dodd, you are bringing up. And they are valid concerns. 911s were one of those issues. Connectivity, I'm very glad that we're going to not using a cloud hosting system because I do think that is where we are so internet-dependent. And regardless of whether it's a testing day or whatever issues we have, we're a little more vulnerable. This, I think, is a better, more secure solution for us, especially with the backup. But I think that the, the bottom line to me is, is that the cost savings and the fact that now all of other schools will have the same level of technology for their phone system. Because we've had phones that were not equal from school to school. And, and I really feel like that's what's necessary.
You still have classrooms without phones.
And we still have classrooms without phones. Does this, and I don't know that it, because I, and I understand, you know, now basically, anywhere where we have a Cat 5 dropped, we pretty much have a, a phone line that can be put in. I'm assuming this also has the availability that if we, if for some reason we had the desire of a wireless VoIP extension, I believe that's just a, it's just a matter of, okay, if you want that option, that's something that can be done.
It is. Another thing we've learned is every school, they have one wireless phone in the cafeteria.
And that would be, yeah.
Device will also support three additional phones if the school desires that.
And I can even see, and I'm not saying it's today, but I could see where even, you know, there could be one administrator that has a phone if they needed to be, or a dean or somebody of that nature where, you know, it, I believe this day has come. It's the right time. And, and I'm very excited about it. That does not negate that I think Mr. Dodd's correct in asking all the questions that he's asking. But I just want you to know, it's the rest of the thing, I think, to move forward with.
So the installation is gonna be completed, they said, by July 15th?
Yes.
And, and you feel confident too, or they must feel confident because they signed this con, we're gonna sign this contract that's gonna give us a penalty clause if they don't have it done by then.
That's correct.
But I think that's gonna be a pretty big undertaking with a lot of their personnel coming in. Because you're not gonna start this until the end of the school year?
We're gonna start planning that right away, but we're not actually going to be swapping phones over until the school is out of us.
And having the, the servers that are gonna be separate from our other survey, servers, is gonna make, is gonna handle this load no problem?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
We wanna be in La Canto and wanna be in everything else. So we have disaster recovery in case something happens in one of those two offices.
Okay. Because if a server does go down, it's gonna affect all the schools, even the main switchboard. Is that correct? Or should we have some hard, hardwire?
There still will be standard business lines connected into the system. So if, if there's some break in the connectivity between this system, the calls can be routed through those standard business lines that we have as backup. At each site right now, we have two lines as backup for 911 and also for alarm systems. And I'm sorry, my, my is here from Vertex.
I just wanted to clarify some of that. Thanks. In regards to your question about if the servers go down, what makes the ShoreTel system unique is the.
is the dial tone actually lives on a hardware device. You'll have one of those at each location. So even if the server goes down, you'll still have dial tone. That's, that's one of the unique features of the ShoreTel architecture. So the server is there to do your management tasks, auto attendance, things like that. And then we have these switches at each location and the voicemail for that location and the auto attendant live on that switch as well. So it handles the dial tone. So even if the server goes down, that local site still has their voicemail, auto attendance, all that good stuff. So completely transparent to the user, they wouldn't even know the server's down.
So what would be the biggest problem with the server going down?
You, you wouldn't be able to add a user or change an auto attendant or something like that. You wouldn't be able to actually do like a management function until we restored that service.
So the server going down is not going to prevent a phone call from going through?
Absolutely not.
Either if it's.
That's, that's our, that ShoreTel's big, that's part of their secret sauce is we have the most redundant, we have multiple layers of redundancy and the big thing that nobody else can do that we can do is the dial tone lives on the switch, so it's completely independent of what happens with the server.
And now, you have the county, the contract with the county?
That's correct. We just finished the implementation for them, I guess around October of last year.
The city of Venderness.
City of Venderness as well, yeah. We've done a ton of these. We're actually doing Pennsyl State College right now. It's about 2,000 handsets as well, so we're just finishing that up.
What is our number of handsets? How, how many phone?
Eighteen.
It's around seventeen hundreds of them. That would look like.
Now, so like every phone in this building gets changed out too? So every phone?
And one of the other advantages is that because it's, it's treated, even though you have all these locations, it's treated as one big system. And so if Steve or whoever's managing the system adds a user, it's immediately in the system. It doesn't matter what location they're at and it's also in your directory, like on the phone, you're going to have a directory button and you can press that and it'll be every person in the district that has a phone will be in that directory. You just press it and it calls them. So you've got four or five-digit dialing, whatever you're used to. It's a completely unified system and that's part of, again, the ShoreTel pitch and going to your concerns about the fiscal aspect, we are the lowest total cost of ownership. It is super easy to manage. It makes everybody's life easier. It's very resilient. Like you say, we're going to be able to consolidate some of your phone circuits. That's where some of your savings can come from as well on the CenturyLink side. So yeah, it's a very, very compelling idea.
Let me ask, you were talking about buses and communication. Is there any ability to link into buses with this? I'm ready, you know?
The only, well, the only thing I could think of was maybe we've got a, an option, there's an optional component called mobility that you can put it, put it on your cell phone. So if the bus driver had a, a.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
District provided cellphone, then he could basically four-digit dial. It's just like an extension on the system and vice versa, you could four-digit dial him. And you can also do video from those two. So that might be a, if you want the bus driver to be able to video what's going on back to somebody.
Yeah, while they're driving, yeah.
Well, no, I was thinking, I was thinking in, in one of those bad news scenarios where they end up on the side of the road and the kids are beating each other up, so, yeah, yeah.
Never happened.
Not here.
But there would be the possibility of the bus driver having a phone to be able to.
Sure, he could have an extension on this, he could be in the directory, the whole nine yards.
Well, then maybe we can check into this.
I think the problem is we have to have a cell service with each driver and I don't think we have that in our budget right now. But I, I mean, I love the idea.
Oh, I do, yes. I'm just seeing driver on every bus.
We'll just get you Wi-Fi on every bus.
It's, well, we've already gone started, so.
Oh, well, if that's the case, then you can run the calls over Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I mean, and that's really a different, that's really probably how you would deal with the solution is, is if the bus had a Wi-Fi, which is part of conversations we've had, then you would have that and it would make every bus an extension.
I like that idea.
Mr., Mr. Bradshaw may have an issue with them picking up that phone while driving, which I think is a violation of.
Well, remember the, the stop, bus stops, only have stops.
And what is a warranty on, on the phones themselves?
The actual equipment warranty is a year on the, on the, it's first year, but you guys are going to have full coverage, we call it. So if a handset goes bad during that five-year period, we're going to replace it.
Mr. Campbell, this was part of our, our capital expense that we had budgeted, if I recall already, that we were getting ready to make a change of it because our contract's ending, if I recall, with, with Century and.
It is, and we've been funding a lot of the phone costs to the capital.
Right. When is that contract? I know it's coming up, but when is it?
July 15th.
July 15th, okay, that's the date you'll have to do when I've been running by.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. 寄挂电话 Alan Baker.
Hi.
I suppose carries four zero. Thank you, Steve.
Appropriate questions, very appropriate.
Mr. Bradshaw.
Approval minutes.
Oh, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. It's been by Mr. Kennedy's phone, it's Brian, and the truth of the minutes, all of it.
Thank you.
I suppose carries four zero. And now we'll move on to Bradshaw.
The only thing that I want to do is important, because I know that there was an article posted on a local news site about the groundhog, you saying that they haven't received anything. I just wanted to assure the board that the, after you approved the, the letter, it went out that day and it was sent to the mailing address that's listed on the SUD biz, on this annual report on where it, where you should receive mail and it was mailed out immediately. So kind of there were some questions I was asked whether or not, but it had been sent or not, but it was sent and I, and I copied all of y'all the same day with a copy of the, of the letter via email. So it was mailed to him. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
It was a very detailed letter, I appreciate. All of us went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Mullen, would you say, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, just some things that, a couple lifting outs. First of all, I, I don't think that the board knows all this, but Mr. Mullen and Crystal River High School was working on this. The Biomed program at Crystal River High, they worked that those are now honors courses and they have been reviewing those courses to ensure that they have, they are very rigorous courses, they are science courses that are what they call level three courses and those are typically honors courses. And so they've gone back through and looked at, at those. I believe the administration is going to be even looking at like the CNA courses and it's going to be.
Wait.
The wait, I'm sorry, sir, thank you. So there, thank you, Mr. Mullen. And so I just appreciated the, you know, as often, I know we, it's common for us, but if there's a question or an issue, the staff here is just amazing and from Ms. Hamel to Mr. Mullen, who tend to be the ones I know that we deal with a lot, it just filters through and I appreciate that. I, I did attend with Vice Chair Ginger Bryant and the Honorable Doug Dodd, the meeting with the county commissioners on the impact fees. I really want to thank Chairman, and, and it was reading the letter by Ms. Powers who had prior engagements and couldn't be there, but I, I really wanted to thank Chairman Titchin and the other commissioners who provided a very respectful welcoming to us and that was very positive. The Board County Commission staff stayed there till they kind of got through what their decision is. The Board County Commission staff, staff explained that they would probably take six months before they could, if they, if that day that board had decided to lift the suspension of impact fees, would take about six months for it to be implemented between the requirements of the 90-day requirements for both having a public hearing and then there is a 90-day implementation evidently that they have. So what that really meant is it would be, it would only be lifted for a, about a six month period. And so there wasn't a lot of conversation about whether they should or shouldn't have impact fees. A lot of it became for what we're talking about and they didn't feel like, they just wanted to leave, let it sunset. Now, what that would imply, and this was the understanding, is that in January 2017, it would automatically, at this point, would automatically revert to, there would be a collection of it, of impact fees based on the previous schedule they had adopted, which I believe for us was about 50% of the recommended rate. So I, I think that's important to understand. At this point, if they take no action, impact fees would return in January 2017. Chris Lloyd offered a very supportive, asking of the Board County Commission to reinstate impact fees and also talked very highly about how the school system, he believed, was valuable to why people would move to Citrus County and why it was essential to fund those impact fees. I, I think one of the things though that I found interesting was this, and that is that one commissioner made the claim that he had spoken to the Hernando County, a Hernando County Commissioner. Now, why this is also important is there was a lot of comparisons as to, you know, a little bit of questions as to who has impact fees and what they're being charged and so forth. And I would just state, Hernando, just for us to remind us, they have now adopted a sales tax for schools. So they have sales tax. They are looking to, they are in the stages right now of bringing back school impact fees along with other impact fees, but they also pushing for that, have sales tax. Marion County is in the talks of bringing back impact fees, but they also have an additional mill that they collect for school capital. They're getting 2.5 mils to our 1.5. I think that's important that when they compare, that's not entirely accurate to say how it's funded. But this is what I found interesting. So the one commissioner claimed that when he spoke to Hernando County Commissioner, that that Commissioner said there was a 25% boost in permits that could be equated to the suspension of impact fees. I do not see that there's data to support that. I would like to see that data, but for the moment, let's just say that's fact. Well, here's where it gets interesting. If that were the case, there were 300 permits last year in Citrus County, residential permits pulled. That would equate to 25%, would be 75 permits. There were $2 million in impact fees not collected in Citrus County. That would mean in order to have gotten those 75 units into Citrus County, Citrus County taxpayers paid $26,000 for each one of those people to come to Citrus County because you didn't collect the impact fees for us. So by making the claim there's a 25% boost, that would be 75 people that we pay $2 million to come here, that would equate to about $26,000 per station. I find that a travesty that we've paid that kind of money, or I should say that taxpayers have lost that investment. This is the other thing though. For Citrus County schools, as we know, that's $600,000 that we have lost in impact fees. From what we can tell, at 1.5 mils, which is what our, our state cap is at right now, and that's not going to get into the moment, the other thing I'm just going to say of sharing it with charter schools, at 1.5 mils, that's going to take almost 15 years to collect back the fact that what we, we haven't collected in impact fees for us for this one year. It will take us 15 years. And that doesn't mean that for all the new tax revenue, we don't get new tax revenue. It's going to take us 15 years just to collect back the new houses that were built that we aren't getting. So I say that because I know, I know this board understands that issue, but it is important for us to make sure that when people ask us, well, you're not building or you're not doing, and, and we would disagree that we are building and we are expanding. But the other fact is that I think the impact to our community, Citrus County Chronicle right now is running a poll again on impact fees. Right now, it's about two to one, it's a non-scientific poll, but about two to one is in support of impact fees. And I think that's just interesting for us to watch. So I, I felt like I wanted to share that with you. I, I also have to just talk about a legislative update. You know, each year, we've said, it can't get any worse. I'm sorry, but I, this year when I said that, I was wrong. Some of the list of things that have happened, and I think some of you know, there's been a train bill that's been out there. One of them is House Bill 7029 that started off with only about a dozen pages having to do with college funding. It is now over 140 pages with amendments, nearly all of them for K-12. But these are the things that now as a board, we may be facing. High school athlete free agency. This makes a lot of sense. By the way, and for those of you who don't know, all of the burden, financial, penalty-wise, everything is put onto the school district and the teacher. So even if someone does an error, it will be the school district that is on, on the hook. Shared capital funding with charter schools, that looks like that's going to be a reality for us. Now, here's something that our board is going to need to, I think it's a clarification of. Our charter school, one of our charter schools, the students do not spend the entire year out there. If we are having to subordinate by, be forced now to subordinate, a pupil, per pupil allocation of that 1.5 mils, well, how do we calculate the fact that they're only there half the year? And, you know, does that mean one year, we get it, then it's split another year because as freshmen, they typically are there for the whole year? But then the other years, half of their time is spent with us. So whose capital dollars? Because if you're saying they follow the student, well, then those dollars would come back to the school district. So that's a question that we're, I think, going to have to ask. Best and brightest, if you don't know Best and Brightest, everyone thought it was dead, gone. It has risen, risen like a phoenix. It is now being funded at $5 million more. It is now being, today, it was finished, the final proposal, and it was, the Senate has agreed verbally that it will be, $49 million this year will be allocated towards it, which is a $5 million increase, four of which the House found somewhere. $1 million was part of the proposal. I would. The Senate. So that means we're going to have over $90 million will have been spent on the Best and Brightest and I am very grateful for all of those that have gotten the Best and Brightest. I'm appreciative that they did, but there is a lot better use for over $90 million that we could have done. And in our school district, I believe that money should have come to us and let us bargain or let us make decisions that are right for students. Computer coding is going to be a foreign language. We talked about earlier today. I, I'm a computer guy and I don't agree with this. And I know, you know, Ms. Powers, I think by just that expression, that tells me, it's not a language. I'm sorry. It's a great thing, I believe in it, but it's not a foreign language. Pico money. It was decided yesterday, no, Sunday, I believe, that we will share half of the $150 million. And again, I know this board knows that, but that means that 250,000 students will receive the same amount of money as the 250,000 charter school students will receive, $75 million. And the over 2.6 million public school students will also get the $75 million, which basically comes out to that our charter school students would get almost $300 per student in Pico money and our public school students will get about $28. And it would mean a school like the Academy of Environmental Science would get about the same amount of money as Citrus High School, which I cannot for the life of me understand. In the train bill of House Bill 7029, one of the first lines that's being approved, I thought I would hold out to you, it says, quote, "The visitation of schools." This is having to do with modifying school board duties for the state of Florida statutorily. Visitation of schools, visits, you would visit the schools, observe the management and instruction, give suggestions for improvement and advise citizens with the view of promoting interest in education and improving the schools. Really? Really?
I want to be welcomed, yeah.
We've only been doing that since, since the dawn of this and they're going to now put that into statute. I, I found it a little bit interesting that, that now they're, they are putting that there and I can't help but question why.
They probably should mandate legislators to also do that so they know what's wrong and what's.
That would be a good idea. I would agree with you. So that, that's my little rant. I want to end on a positive note. On Sunday. On Sunday, if you open the paper, you didn't even have to open the paper, the first thing you see is another one of our students on the front page, and it was Miles Teller. There was four articles, or I'm gonna count the timeline as an article, on that, and I thought what was really great was how he talked about how Citrus County Schools was a part of, part of what he felt developed him. He obviously talked about Ms. Beth Beatty, and how she influenced him, and he also indicated that he would love to come back to our schools and talk to our kids, and I would really encourage, if there's any way we can make that happen, I would love to see that happen. That article was written by someone who is gonna be leaving us in his last meetings today, and that's Andrew Kaplan from the Chronicle.
Andrew, what's wrong? You should have been going to the house.
I'm sorry.
He's been a great asset. He has asked some tough questions along the way.
And writes so well.
He, he's written some, he really does, and boy, that's saying a lot from our person to say he writes so well. So Andrew, thank you for caring about kids, for highlighting Citrus County in both positive ways, and then also writing some tough stories, because we've had, while you've been here, some tragedies, and you've made sure to also make sure that successes like Miles, and even the little ones like his own middle school teacher that he wrote, our elementary school teacher, Ms. Bushman, I believe, was another great story that he wrote that I, he's made sure the little stories got told wherever possible. So thank you. And that's all.
And just where are you going?
Tampa Tribune.
Tampa.
The Tribune.
Tribune. Tell you.
I don't like that little bit of news at all.
Mr. Bond?
I've got a couple things. You know, we've seen here today with the automation production camp, you know, it's gonna be offered, you know, we've put out the marine science station, we know what they're gonna offer through SWIFTMUD and some of the programs, and yet programs through the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranch and Sheriff's Office, so I really, it's nice to see how involved we are in the community, even during the summer months, that we're offering opportunities for students to learn, and so I'm really happy to see those opportunities out there for our students. And I also know that we've been a big supporter of the Citrus County Fair, and that's coming up our week after spring break, which I think a lot of people know that and are aware. I think we've done a good job communicating that, and I'm glad to see Mr. Porter, Hal Porter, the Fair Director, or the Executive Director, you know, had come out and, you know, knew or understood what took place, and, you know, we know what's gonna happen next year, so we've tried to communicate that, and I think, I even read in the paperwork, Hal said that, you know, maybe he'll see how attendance works out, maybe it'll even be better if it's not during spring break. I don't know. I sure hate that kids have to miss school for those involved, but I think we're doing everything that we can to work with them, and so I was glad about that. Also, the Safe Route for Schools grants, I know Mr. Kennedy...
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, allowed, you know, his, one of his SAC committees was at Pleasant Grove, and he allowed me to go over there, because I was a little bit involved with that.
Wasn't hard, it wasn't a lot. It was a team, thank you for going.
And I know you're going to Forest Ridge, which is coming up, so we had a really good meeting, and, you know, it's just, it's hap, I'm glad to see the cooperation here. We're looking to bring sidewalks to down 581 to Pleasant Grove, and connect on Druid to go to the library, it'll go all the way down to 44, and it's on the NPO, the list, you know, I think it's number three, Chuck Nixon was there, people from the county, Eric Head from the library, a lot of people came to that meeting to support that, and it's just kind of refreshing to see how both the county and the city, because it's in the city limits, it's administered by the county, are working together in this project here in Inverness, as well as us, we are with the school system, and Ms. Kirby, and everyone who's worked hard over years to get this in. You know, it's not a done deal yet, but it looks good, and it looks like it's gonna be a reality. I hope it is, I hope it gets approved, I hope it gets funded, but those are some really positive things, right, when we're all kind of working together. Now, we still have the issue on 41 North up at Middle School Road, and somebody brought that up in the meeting last night, which was kind of interesting, that one of the citizens there asked about that and the issues there, and I know that, you know, we've talked about that, we've written a letter, we've, you know, tried to push that as best we can, but DOT controls the funding, that controls the, what's gonna happen when they upgrade 41, widen it, do overpass, all those things, and the gentleman there last night had said that, you know, they were looking at 2021, you know, maybe have it completed by, but he says they're gonna move on acquisition the right of way, or the, you know, buying more property, and so he's hoping that it could be before then, but then, I mean, that's still a long time to wait, but that's the reality of it. So we've done a lot there, as much as we can, we have done a lot, as much as we can do, but it's still important that we're looking at those things. I talked with Mr. Mullen a little bit about a couple issues that I know he's working on with Superintendent. You know, we had the incident at Rockcrusher Elementary School with the handgun that was dropped, and the firearm safety issues that we're gonna be dealing with, and I know they're gonna be looking at how to best bring that to staff. I know this board is committed to school safety, and that we've taken appropriate action there, dealing with that case, but we have to be ever so aware of those situations that can go on, and how we are preparing our staff, our personnel, to deal with those issues. So I appreciate that, that as you look at that, as you think about next year's, you know, training, in-service training, what, how you're gonna handle that, I know there's some things you're looking at, so I appreciate that. I would like to know if we could put on a workshop, one of the policies, there's a couple policies that I think we could draw some attention to, but I would really like to workshop the policy on naming school facilities. Our policy we have right now, and I think it's a good time to do it, because there's not really issues at stake right now, you know, it would be a time, we have a agreement, memorial policy. I have had some people, or a person inquire about, you know, naming, how they can go about having something in the school system named for somebody, and, you know, our policy basically talks about memorials, agreements and memorials, 2.91. It was adopted in March of 2004, it has not been revised, but it's so basic, it's so, it's one paragraph that really doesn't give much direction, and I've talked to Superintendent, we've talked a little bit about it, but there's issues there. I think this board should address in a policy on how we're gonna deal with naming fields or stadiums or facilities or buildings or floors or whatever it is.
It's not just schools, like you're saying, it's been rooms and whatever, and it'd be, we need to, we need to review that policy, I think.
And we did name Ginger Porter Drive, that was a board decision.
Right.
And that was dealing with property, but, and she has passed away, it was a great way to honor her, but yet there's not a real clear-cut way of going up...
Lincoln Field, we have, you know, different places.
Yeah, we've got Vicki O'Leary Field, we've got, and I don't wanna cut down on the leeway of principles, but yet on the other hand, we have to kind of give some direction on how much leeway we're gonna allow to take place. So I think it would be a workshop meeting, so I would just present that to the chairperson in regards to, at some point this year, that we could maybe put that on a workshop.
Principals get approached often about, oh, you know, you need to, especially when someone passes, or when something, and they don't always know how to answer, because now it puts them in a position, and so I think we could help give them some, something to hold on.
I remember we had a very involved discussion some years ago, maybe it was long ago, maybe it was 2004, but Mr. Bradshaw, are we thinking about going to policy forms? I know Mr. Dodd asked about a workshop, so legally, which way should we get one?
Well, the workshops are just gonna be discussed, or we can start to have a policy for that.
If we have a workshop, then we can have a conversation, and then we can send the policy forms, and then let it come back.
There's no use just, there are policy forms that come back and stuff, what do you want?
Right. Okay, then we'll do that. What, Lou, would you mind if we leave it? The time for that next workshop? Do we have, do we have? Okay, so we'll put it on the April workshop.
Okay, that would be great, I appreciate it. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
Well, Ms. Hill and I, and a number of our students, were at the African-American Read-In. We did an excellent job, and we...
Perp, that's how.
I expect no less, but our children were excellent, they truly were.
The Lincoln High School Drama Club did their thing, the little kids from Fisher Primary were awesome. Those children you had were middle school, so we had, we were... Anyway, that's all I have.
I don't think so, yeah. I'm just bringing to you a certificate of appreciation from the Salvation Army to the school system. Every year at Christmas time, we do the Angel Tree, and we buy gifts, and I think one, we had as low as 20 up to 80 gifts for children, 80 children that were sponsored. So they gave us a certificate and a grateful appreciation for generous service to the community and to the welfare of our fellow men, and making Christmas happy for others.
Thank you, and we do an excellent job, and the toys that y'all get are so incredible. They're just not something you pick up, that they're well thought out, so thank you very much, school system, all of you. Simone, that's the...
Can I, before we adjourn?
What is "why lies"?
One more indulgent.
A lot, a lot.
My nephew sent from Massachusetts something that I have to take care of, and this was the appropriate time to do it. I know you all will understand when you see it. Flat Stanley?
Knowing about...
Dr. Dennis, could you take a picture of us with Flat Stanley?
He attended school more than you.
Exactly. Any elementary parents will well understand Flat Stanley, and how important Flat Stanley is.
But, hey, you wanna be able to see them.
Yeah, well, here, I'll put him right up here.
One, two, three. Can we do one more? One, two, three. Does he know?
Anyone else have anything that we can bring up, or say? Okay, well, we wanna say to Andrew, we're going to miss you.
Are you gonna check in with us?
You better.
Are you going to check in with us?
Yeah.
We're adjourned.
They all say that.
Yeah, yeah.
They all, they all say that, Andrew.
The difference is I grew up in Citrus.
That's true.
And my...